Okay, we're ready to start. Thanks Lisa.
Okay, the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee Hybrid Meeting is called to order at one oh two P M. I'm Carl Burnett. I am the new chair. If I screw anything up, please interject and let me know so that I can do it better. We'll start out with the roll call. We want to, we have one minute. I go, I guess the total not remember. I'm Carl Burnett. I use he/him pronouns. I am here in person today in the council chambers. Wearing a checked shirt and glasses.
Yeah, my name is John Halen. He/him. I am sitting next to Carl on site. I'm wearing a gray. I would say a fancy jacket that someone gave me and everyone says I look good in, so.
Aaron online?
Hi, this is Aaron Rivers. I use the he/him pronouns. I'm in my office today attending online. I have short brown and gray hair and I'm wearing a black hoodie.
Stephanie?
Hi, I'm Stephanie Etsman. I have she/her pronouns and I am attending virtually online. I have long brown curly hair and I'm wearing a brown sweater.
Thank you. Derek?
Hi, Derek Hoffbauer. I am attending virtually as well, a little under the weather today, so I'm going to kind of steer clear of everyone for in-person meetings. And I have short dark hair, brown eyes, and I'm wearing a blue sweater. Thank you.
Thanks Derek. Hope you feel better soon. Amanda? Liz Woodfin.
Everyone, Liz Woodfin. She/her pronouns. I'm remote today. I've got a stacked day full of meetings, so I'm gonna boogie right after this. I have blonde hair, blue eyes, and I'm wearing a green jacket. I'm probably gonna have my video off for most of the meeting.
Thanks Liz. Corey?
Hey, I'm Corey. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a white woman and I have kind of longish blonde hair and I'm wearing a gray hoodie today.
Thank you. Liz Dether Martin?
Hi, I'm Liz Dether Martin. I use she/her pronouns. I, well, let's see, I'm wearing a bright green shirt and have unruly brown hair. And I am attending remotely.
Thank you. Nicholas?
Uh, yeah, uh, my name is Nicholas Raiden and I am attending remotely today from my Seattle office. And I have a black sweatshirt with a white undershirt underneath and blondish hair. And I go by, I use he/his, he/him/his pronouns. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we know Whitney will be absent today.
Great. So, uh, would, would anyone like to volunteer to read the land acknowledgement?
I could do it.
Thanks, John.
We would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north of the Columbia River, is the original homeland of the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederated Tribes ceded this land in the Treaty of eighteen fifty-five while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Wanalama, Warm Springs, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note that the Klamat Trail ran north through this region to the great Salilo Falls Trading Grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land.
Thanks, John. Next item is the approval of the draft minutes for both the September and October meetings of this committee. Is there a motion to approve? Well, I guess, first of all, are there any corrections to either the September or October draft minutes?
Nick, we see your hand is raised online, Nicholas.
Yes, uh, for the October twenty-sixth minutes, it indicated that I had attended in person when I was actually attending the remotely on that one due to some of that at the time.
Thank you.
Get that fixed. Thanks. Anything else?
Uh, I motioned to approve the September twenty-eighth draft minutes.
I'll second that.
Yeah, it's just, uh,
vote to all in favor of approving the September twenty-eighth draft minutes.
Aye, aye.
Okay, um, I
All right, I motioned to approve the October twenty-sixth draft minutes as amended.
And I'll second that again. Okay. Who approves the October draft minutes? Raise your hand. Or say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, both the September and October minutes are approved as amended. Thank you. Next, we have some time for a public comment. Is there a member of the public who wants to speak?
There's no attendees. There's no public comment.
Okay. I guess we'll move on to item number five, the Quebec Strategic Plan wrap-up. Cassandra, would you like to introduce that?
Sure, thank you Carl. This is Cassandra. So, as we look to close out twenty twenty-three, which is hard to believe that we are at that position, but we are. I'm really excited with the condition and the position that our twenty twenty-three Strategic Initiative Work Plan is in for Quebec. And I know that we've got the three subgroups that are working really hard on improving transportation and infrastructure, creating an accessible community, and then creating a culture of accessibility within the City of Ben's organization. And so really what I'm looking for at this point is if there are any final edits that any of the subgroup members want to make to these three sections and the different subpoints that they have within them. And then between now and our next meeting, if the subgroups could meet specifically to discuss what twenty twenty-four is gonna look like to them. So a timeline for them, and if we could break down the timeline with goals, they could either be monthly or they could be quarterly depending on what's more supportive to each of the goals. But then I'm gonna submit that in an annual kind of workup of what we've completed this year to our City of Bend staff, just to let everyone know, and also the leadership team. They're aware of it, but I want to really create a document that memorializes all of the work that Quebec has done this year and forecast all of the exciting work that lays ahead. So with that in mind, yeah, just creating between now and the next meeting, which I know is, is soon in December, a quick meeting between your subgroup to create that timeline and if, if that's monthly or quarterly. And then also to identify and assign point people for each of the tasks. So I know you have multiple kind of initiatives within each of the groups. So if you say like, for instance, in improving transportation infrastructure for the different points, we know that for the airport project, potentially like Carl's gonna take lead. Or for the next project, maybe Whitney's gonna take lead, but identifying kind of those points that then those individuals can really organize as, as, as the year goes on and progresses. If that's acceptable to Quebec, if there's a different way that you'd like to do it, but just thinking strategically to look ahead at a calendar and make sure that we can have an implementation to hold ourselves accountable for timelines and getting things done. I think that would be fantastic. So with that, we could move through the subgroup. It's okay with you, Carl, and then see if anyone has changes or amendments and then we can move from there.
Sure. So just to repeat back what I heard, your request is any changes that we might want to still make to the goals as written, identifying a point person to each, for each task? And was there another thing?
Meet with your subgroup between now and December. Yeah, but that's, that's it for now. Yep.
Okay, and Cassandra, is there an option for us to do that, those meetings virtually? Is that, would that be acceptable?
Absolutely. Okay. Yep. The subgroups, I think, have the flexibility that the subcommittees don't, where we need to have that noticed meeting for public record. So that, that can be virtually, it can be over the phone, it could be in different, different ways. So, yeah.
Okay.
And I know, I know specifically this time of year is really challenging, so if, if, if it also comes to an idea of emails, I, I'm happy to facilitate that as well if, if, if we need to bounce them off, off of me to another person or whatever that looks like.
Okay. Thanks. Are there questions from committee members about the about Cassandra's request? For us to meet? Okay. So you said you'd like to go around between the three subgroups and and just report out on what we've been up to?
Yeah, and if there are any final changes, like you said, Carl, to the goals specific that I can then reflect in that overall memorandum that I'm creating for end of year. Yep.
Okay. We can, I can start with the Transportation and Infrastructure Group.
Great.
Oh, thanks for pulling that up there. So I don't think that we have any changes to this first goal. We will start to explore each of these kind of four avenues for achieving this. In tandem, we'll probably try to break that up a little bit and have one person look into each of these. If possible.
Carl, sorry, if I may say, and I know that members and Stephanie, maybe you would be more, or Derek, somebody more familiar with this information that was shared. I know at the COCA meeting earlier this week, but there was some very interesting potential information shared around a, a, a transportation company called Modus Transportation. And I don't know if that's something that you've, you've had a chance to review or, or discuss or talk about before, but it was proposed as one of the on-demand that that's floating out there, but may not be as well-known. But just wanted to put that forward.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I found out about them when I was looking into some of the, the companies that provide that non-emergency medical transport, which is their bread and butter, I believe. I, when I was trying to get a ride to the airport myself, they weren't able to provide one, but maybe we were, maybe we would be able to work with them to make that happen in the future. So, yeah, that does seem like a promising lead and that might actually represent a fifth bullet point there because they're not an Uber lift, they're not a taxi company, they're not C E T, and they're not city-run. So yes, that, we actually should add a fifth bullet for those non-em, non-emergency medical transport companies. That's one that we've been talking about, but it just didn't make it into the, onto the list there.
That sounds great. And I see that Derek has his hand raised.
Yeah, and I, I'm guessing that C E T probably contracts with them, so I can check in with our team to see, you know, if there are certain parameters for which they work and, you know, if they would have that kind of flexibility. So, yeah, that was good to hear from COCA and I had actually sent Carl the, Carl, I didn't realize you had already kind of followed up and did a little research on that, but I, I shot a quick note to Carl to potentially check them out as a, as a good viable option, so.
Yeah, it's just a, a matter of geography and time, right? These companies often have limitations on when they're willing to provide service and where. Is everyone online able to hear me? By the way, I was, I was told that I was not speaking loud, loud enough. Okay, sounds good.
I can hear you.
Okay. Usually I have the opposite problem, so, good. Let's move on to the second goal. Does anyone else in the Transportation Infrastructure subgroup want to talk about this one? Maybe Whitney, if you wouldn't mind?
Whitney is not present today.
Yeah, I can, I can go across. Sorry, I tried to turn my mic off and I turned my video off. So sure, yeah, so this one is similar to an event that was, I believe we called it Disability for a Day. That's, I think, what they used to be called. And then this is now morphing that concept into kind of a walk role event to basically bring awareness to people with disabilities as well as other vulnerable users like pedestrians and people who bike to, you know, highlight some of the difficulties they have with some of the existing infrastructure in our city. So the last session was focused on roundabouts, which I think was really good, was well-attended. Got a lot of media notice and the idea is to do more of these to work kind of with some of the other partners like Community Options, COCA, Central Oregon Disability Network. It was, it was nice because a lot of those groups kind of came together for this. And, you know, got a little news media and I think the goal is for us to, you know, organize another one of these events, but to do it for a half-day instead of a full day. And I think that was one of the lessons learned, that it was, it was challenging to get staff when it was an all-day event. So, and then maybe do a little more of the promotions and, and the work ahead of it to make sure that, you know, folks' calendars are clear and they have time blocked off. So really kind of doing, I, I think the next step would be to identify like where and when. So, you know, do we want it focused on a roundabout or maybe it's you know, a crosswalk is another example. Potentially, you know, if there's some new infrastructure coming in, highlighting that as a potential area and just working with some different partners and really kind of, I guess, being the, you know, the group that kind of gets it off the ground and provides that initial kind of planning and engagement around it and then maybe leaning on some of the partners for implementation. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Stephanie?
Thanks Derek.
Thank you. I'm just kind of tagging on to this a little bit. It's, it's kind of on topic, but not, not all, not a hundred percent. At a COCA meeting in July, Roger Gutierrez and then Kate Hunter Zaworski talked to us. It was right after our walk and roundabout event or rollabout event. And so I got an email yesterday from Kate and she is an engineer, professor, engineering professor at O S U. And she wants to put together a roundtable discussion. And so I think that this is something that we might want to bring before Quebec as well. She asked if COCA wanted to help facilitate or at least get community members to participate. She's especially interested in hearing from community members who use mobility devices and have to navigate roundabouts or, or just avoiding them because they're not navigable. And so it's a roundtable audience. It's gonna be February fifteenth. The, the time has not been determined yet. It will be via Zoom. Probably in the late morning sometime. And so they really want to hear from community members who use mobility devices and have to navigate the infrastructure specifically roundabouts and other complicated intersections. And they want to do this before a two-and-a-half-day webinar that the engineers have to attend on roundabout design and engineering. So it will help fuel that, their discussion and their, and their education on how to, to design accessible roundabouts. So I wanted to throw that out there because it might, you know, align nicely with this particular goal. And I can forward information once, to COCA once we get that nailed down.
That's great. Thank, thank you, Stephanie, for sharing that, that info. I believe, just to add on to what Derek said, that we had an initial, initial idea of trying to do this event in May. Once the snow is gone and we might be able to highlight sort of the good, the bad, and the ugly, all in one place ideally, where we can see some examples of what, of, of things that work well and things that don't work so well. I, by the way, I want to say welcome Amanda and note that Amanda Hamer is now present. Great. So can we move on to the second subgroup? Creating an accessible community. Do you want to speak about that one, John, to start?
Sure. Okay, one of the initiatives is to create a website for services that if someone were to print it out on their web browser, it would come out to just a page. It would have hyperlinks and such, but the idea is to condense it down so that it's not a never-ending Wikipedia page of all services available. Just kind of like, like a distillation and guide on being, you know, disabled in Central Oregon. So first, we need to figure out what frequently asked questions are. We need to figure out what the resources are in Central Oregon and start writing those down. We need to have basic knowledge as far as like what, you know, what are the requirements for sidewalks? You know, how wide do right-ofaways have to be? Who do you report to? So basically just tracking down services and how, how to address them issues that people have. So.
Great.
Oh, and this is Liz. I think if we can start with this committee, if you guys have any resources you would love to see or questions and answers you would love to see, please reach out to me or John or anybody. With, with those, we'll, we'll work on our own list, but we don't want to miss anything that you guys think we should have at hand.
This is Amanda. I'll just really quickly. Is this working? How do I make it work? It's working. Just have to have it in front of me. Cool. Sorry, again, this is Amanda. I'm wearing a beaver hat today because nobody wants to see my hair. We, Diversibility Inc. started a website called diversibilityvillage.org that has resources. The whole idea behind the website is to have one place to go where you can find all resources related to disability, diversibility. And we're working on making it all encompassing so that there's like all diversibilities, all disabilities are noted on there, all the resources related to all the different kinds of all the different categories. And we have a really broad group of categories, like it's cross-disability. So, and we're talking about like mental health, physical, cognitive, and everything in between. So and anybody can add a resource to that website. You just scroll down to the bottom and then you can add your own, you can add your own resource to it, which is ideal. Because then you can, you're just giving your information. But that is intended to be the place where people go to find what they need as far as resources. I don't know how, if that fits well, but that's, that's our goal. And then our big vision is to be able to create a template with that website so that we can sell, gift it, the templates to other regions or other cities. So, yeah, definitely check it out. We haven't like fully launched it yet. It's kind of still in beta mode, so feedback is welcome, but definitely it's diversibilityvillage.org.
Thanks.
This is Cassandra. John, can I ask a clarifying question and Liz as well? This, this specifically, this website would exist on the City of Ben's website or do you see it as being a standalone website that would be more encompassing of Central Oregon? I guess what, where, where do you view this housed and maybe in conjunction with what Amanda has shared?
I mean, I guess I see it since we're a City of Bend committee that it would exist on the City of Bend website, not on its own. I'm sure the City of Bend doesn't want to set up a whole separate website with a webmaster and URL fees and everything for that. So, and I think it would go a long way to show that the City of Bend is taking this seriously by showing that we have, you know, thought about impediments to being in Central Oregon and how to fix that or possible avenues of fixing it.
This is Cassandra. That, that's really helpful to know and I do think that there's a place for us to have that housed on the website. And it may be as we get further on in more of the specifics of it that we were able to look at, you know, citing to Amanda, the, the I can only imagine immense work that takes to be able to have such a resource that you've, you've compiled and created.
Great. Can we move on to the next accessible community goal?
Yeah, so this is having a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. I don't think that's gonna go very far. I did email the Chamber of Commerce and they said, how about you just come up with something and we'll sign on to it if we like it. So they're not interested in doing a collaborative. And the idea would be to address items like, if you guys remember the public comment that came in two meetings ago about Cascade Lakes Brewing. It's about setting up a positive spin and, you know, leading with the carrot, not the stick, about how businesses can better serve better serve the people that we represent in the sense that, yeah, you might be following the letter of the law, but you're not exactly following, you know, the, the intent of the law, which is to make people include, included. And so I think the idea might be changing into us, an idea of, you know, maybe we can highlight a positive spin in the sense that like business owners could be like, oh, I didn't even know that I was excluding people. And all I had to do was like lower one of my tables, you know, two feet and all of a sudden like, yeah, it makes sense and it was an easy fix for me. So I think we need to have a, a more, another, another talk about what that might look like because I think the Chamber of Commerce idea has died.
And this is Cassandra. I have a asterisk on this and I have an update when it will come time for my update a little bit later. But I do love the idea, John, of having that kind of business guide or model and I don't know that we could potentially have three goals in here, but we could discuss that a little bit more because I do think the idea of just, just layout, right? If you were to say like, here are some great tips for layout on tables, on what, what you do when you have like, you know, those kinds of like really high tables, like when you're designing and deciding which tables to order and all of the things, like you, you all have a very important perspective to share as a fellow entrepreneur, business owner, like to know that could be something that you put together. So I, I, I think that would be a great idea to add that and we could talk offline, but that could be a, a second and we could also have a third as I give that update a little bit later on the chamber. Yeah.
Thanks. You have a third goal. Is there another member of the Creating an Accessibility, Accessible Community Committee who wants to talk about this one?
I mean, it's kind of my, my spearhead, so I guess I could, I could say. Basically, we want to do a barbecue at Miller's Landing just to not only get us out in the community and to invite members from the public to come know that we exist and we can advertise that we're having this in the park, but also to highlight the people trying to make the river more accessible, which is, we have more news on that later. And so it, it basically requires me to walk into cash and carry and come up with a budget and send it off to Eric King for approval. And if he approves it, then we can have a barbecue probably in June of next year when the weather's nice and do it right down at Miller's Landing, which has plenty of accessible parking and it's a nice place to hang out. So.
Great. Looking forward to that already.
Don't forget to CC, Cassandra.
Oh, of course. I'm not sending, I'll send it to you and then you'll send it on. Yeah.
Great. So do we want to, does anybody want to report on our third subgroup?
I think Stephanie, this is Amanda. Stephanie, I can do that. Stephanie, why don't you go ahead? You're, you're the team lead.
Okay. So we've got
So we've got, um, our first initiative is creating a trauma, uh, or is, is promoting trauma-informed education for um, um, City of Bend employees. So we feel really strongly that the underpinnings of creating a culture of accessibility is building a foundation of education. And while sometimes we oftentimes think of disability as being something we can see, um, there's many of us in the community who have individual or uh, invisible uh, disabilities. And one of those is trauma, um, which impacts so many of us. And so Trauma Informed Oregon offers educational, educational um, pieces that layer in ways to build a trauma-informed culture. So we have two different objectives under this one. Um, short-term objective is that by the end of 2024, one-third of the City of Bend staff will have completed trauma-informed care trainings. Um, it's important to note that all of these, the trainings on their website are accessible for free if you want to do individual uh, study. If you wanted, if uh, the City of Bend wanted to bring in a speaker and do a group training to um, uh, several uh, city um, personnel at one time, then there would be a fee for that. But all of the web-based trainings are available for free. Um, then, then the long-term objective would be that 100% of the city staff will have completed trauma-informed care trainings within three years. So I don't think there've been any changes. I haven't um, heard of any changes in particular concerning this one. Does anybody else have any comments on it?
No, this is Amanda. No, not that I can think of. And Liz Woodfin was um, the motivator behind this initiative. Um, she recently went or was um, did, was participated in training from Trauma Informed Oregon. And um, and I too have done the, the web-based training. Um, and it's really great. It's not, doesn't take a lot of time, but it's also very informative. Um, so yeah, I think this is a very doable initiative.
Carl, I agree. It seems very measurable and yeah, okay, good goal. Is there, um, remind me, do you guys have any other goals written up at this point?
There were. Do you not have any, any slides for them?
I, I do not.
Oh, we had um, another one where um, was possibly um, reaching, again, another chamber partnership. Um, so, and, and Amanda, maybe you can elaborate on this one a little bit more. But um, Amanda had reached out to the chamber in hopes to increase awareness and build relationships towards our goals of creating a uh, culture of accessibility and thought that uh, by the end of the year, she would reach. And I know that there were some emails that, that went, I, I saw, I was included on between um, Amanda and Cyrus. Um, the program and events lead to um, strategize for the partnerships on opportunities for the, for COBAC and uh, the chamber to um, collaborate. And then um, we were hoping that by the end of next year, there, we would have four different opportunities to collaborate. Um, so Amanda was, has, has, uh, have you, has Cyrus responded to the emails?
Yeah. So this is Amanda. Um, yes, we have a meeting set up next week and I'm not sure Cassandra, if that's what maybe you were, are you gonna be talking about that later? Different. Okay. So um, Cassandra and I are meeting with Cyrus, is it next week? We're meeting with Cyrus next week, um, to talk about those, like what the possibilities are for um, like have, like having a quarterly event or at least some sort of collaboration um, with regard to this, you know, creating this culture of accessibility, which I will, will definitely be bringing up um, the feedback from um, that we got last month about um, the brewery and um, and other stuff too. If anybody has anything that you'd like to bring up that we should address or, you know, have some ideas to talk about. I mean, maybe we need to go in with that and blend those initiatives. What was your, the, just creating, except, right, creating accessibility, just having those conversations. And maybe, John, you can, I don't know, well, maybe we can even talk offline, but um, I feel like we could blend those too.
I've got a, I have, uh, John, I have a friend who um, who has a service animal who um, specifically is really excited about the idea about having like a, a, a positive business spin where it's like, hey, how about we like highlight and like advertise like these businesses that have said like, man, I didn't even know that I was excluding people and now I know and our place is so much better now. And all we had to do was lower the table two feet.
Right.
Like just simple things like that, which is much better than being like, how dare you do this? How dare you follow the letter of the law, but not the intent, you know, so.
Okay. So I think, you know, we'll, I'll talk with, you know, when we meet with Cyrus next week, we'll come up with some ideas about how, like what that could look like as far as it sounds like there's some, there's an education awareness piece to it. And also, um, I don't know, I'm just thinking like that just sounded like a video. I mean, what if we went in partnership with CO, with um, the chamber on creating a commercial that um, about that, you know?
Yeah, this is John. Uh, the thing that makes me nervous is like, how do we approach a business in a way that is like, you know, non-threatening and also like is, is a positive experience for them? Not like, you know, like, hey, like I knew that, like, we noticed that this, like, how would you like to join us in doing this? And it's like, how do you have those conversations with the businesses and don't make them nervous? Or feel like they're gonna be on the front of KTVZ or uh, you know, any other, you know, protests or something like that? So that, that's my biggest nervous.
Anyways, John, we'll, we'll figure out.
Let's figure it out.
Something with Cyrus next week for sure.
Cool.
This is Cassandra too. I think if it's posited as an educational awareness campaign that, you know, COBAC is bringing, we're really excited to include local businesses. Um, it's gonna, it's gonna be something that's got a lot of energy behind it. And like Amanda said, I, I think there's a lot of ways to bring that, that, that would be an exciting thing that businesses would want to be a part of. Especially when we know like local business owners are, are heading it, right? Right? So that's exciting. So, so to clarify, just from my records, the distinction between the two groups of creating a culture of accessibility and then creating a culture of accessibility within the city of Bend, you both have Chamber of Commerce listed. How do we want to move forward without being duplicative? How do we want to move forward? Do we want to joint jointly kind of bring those two groups together to, to, to merge them into one for the purposes of dealing with the chamber for this particular, for this particular meeting next week? Or how do we feel like we want to proceed as a group?
This is Stephanie. I, I, oh, I'm sorry, John. Um, or I, I do think that, I think it would probably be good to, to consolidate both of those. I, I was thinking that when I was listening to um, the first objective to create a collaborative relationship with, with the chamber and how reluctant they have been to kind of come to the table. So I think with a little more um, um, direct in um, pressure maybe from COBAC with a consolidated effort to create opportunities for the collaboration, maybe we can, we can create something um, and, and start, you know, building that relationship. So I think consolidating these would probably be good. That's just my thought.
Sense to me to um, not spread ourselves too thin and just um, end up with two groups instead of three, right?
Yep. Yeah, this is John. That makes sense. I just, after getting shut down, I was like, okay, well, I guess we'll go somewhere else. But if you guys have an in, I say go for it.
We will.
Great. Um, so I guess before we move on, um, is there, um, does anyone else have any other comments about the strategic plan? We've got some um, a summary bullet, bullet points there. Um, thanks Cassandra. We're gonna organize subgroup meetings before our December meeting on the seventh. We're gonna create um, a monthly timeline and delegate team leads for specific projects. So very strategic and hopefully fairly um, streamlined uh, goals to, to come out of those, those subgroup get-togethers. All right, let's move on to the, to item number six on the agenda, which is um, COBAC Business. We have 15 minutes. Um, love to hear from every member, what you've been up to, um, either personally or professionally. Uh, in, in the last month or so, meetings you might have attended, um, firsthand experiences relating to accessibility that you might have had or um, ideas you might have about future agenda items for um, for the committee. So um, John, would you mind kicking us off?
Yeah, um, this is John. Um, we had a, uh, at the last meeting, I mentioned we were doing a fundraiser for the fathers group at uh, my, my facility. Uh, went great. City of Bend got first place and third place. Andres over here got third place, which I heard he didn't even want to come, but look at him.
That's not true.
Oh. So, uh, that was great. We raised a lot of money. And um, also I was at the Visit Bend Board Meeting a couple of days ago, where they voted on the Sustainability Grant Program and they awarded $300,000 to the Miller's Landing Accessibility Project, which is just a small portion of the budget they're gonna need, but a little bit goes a long way.
What's the name of that grant?
Uh, it was the Bend Sustainability Grant, I believe. I could get you the real name. Um, there was an article about it. I'll forward to you.
Yeah, I could, yeah.
Um, and uh, God, what else? Oh, uh, they're going to use our letter that we wrote in support of them to apply for a couple more grants. Um, so they'll just be able to forward that on. Um, and it's the letter that we all signed off on saying that we approve of this project and please give them all the money. Um, so hopefully they get more money for the project because it looks awesome. And that's, that's part of the reason we're doing the barbecue, actually the entire reason we're doing the barbecue at Miller's Landing, so.
Thanks. Amanda, do you have anything to share?
Um, let's see, I shared about the website. We're, feel free to go onto, um, against diversibilityvillage.org. Um, and yeah, add resources, give feedback. Um, we're preparing for a full-scale launch um, by mid-year next year. What else? I think that's, I think that's it. I think of something on, thank you.
Um, Aaron, are you still online? Online? Do you have um, anything, anything to share?
Yeah, I'm still here. Um, I guess my experience has kind of been personal. We got our 11-year-old daughter signed up for snowboard lessons through OAS and I'm pretty excited about that. And through that process, we tried to research, or I've been trying to research um, getting Medicaid-approved providers. I don't know if anybody else in the audience has experienced with that, but it's kind of been amazed. So I've been unsuccessful, but I'm kind of learning about how Medicaid interacts with the local um, local service providers like Bend's Parks and Rec, but not other smaller ones. So it's been a, a learning experience, but not exactly relevant to the overall COBAC group. But that's kind of been my um, guess kind of dipping into the disability accessibility field this month.
Thanks, Aaron. Th- this is Carl. I, I think it absolutely could be relevant, especially when we're talking about um, directories or lists of resources for people, right? That's something I hadn't even thought about. Um, I guess you were talking specifically about Medicaid-approved uh, recreation providers, is that right? But, or is it?
Yeah, so um, like the Bend Parks and Rec District is approved. So like when our, basically our daughter can take classes and Medicaid will pay for it as long as it's a one-on-one um, situation, because that person's acting as a care provider. And so I was hoping to see if I could do that for snowboarding lessons too, because it's basically the same thing. It's a one-on-one provider. But the OAS, it sounded like they get a lot of their money from grants and it was a big, so like maybe a big administrative headache, so I didn't push it too far. But just, just kind of interesting how the system works and our, we have a really good case manager with the Chutes County who's been pretty helpful. So even still, it's, it's a, it was kind of learning as we go or as we kind of come to things. But it's, um, it's a really good resource, but it is kind of unwieldy to get, get used to or get familiar with. So kind of slowly learning trial and error.
This is Amanda. I'm gonna pipe in here. Um, because Aaron, you reminded me of something that um, I just uh, recently launched in partnership with um, the Pedal Clinic, which is um, a community.
Yeah, I've been there recently.
Yeah, a community specialist program where um, people are referred to me really, but diversibility. And um, I help them navigate systems, so, um, and resources. So I'll meet with families and talk with them about what they're interested in, what their needs are. Um, and a lot of times coming from the Pedal Clinic, you're getting a new diagnosis. So um, the world of diversibility is very new. Um, so helping families navigate Medicaid um, resources that are interesting to them or that they need to get hooked into um, as a recommendation from their um, from either the Pedal Clinic or their PCP. And I know Stephanie is too very familiar with resources, but we're super familiar with Oregon Adaptive Sports. And um, and I have some other ideas for you too, Aaron. If you want to reach out to me, we can sit down and have a meeting. There's
Yeah, that, I'd love to do that.
That could be helpful for you.
Uh, you cut out that last part or I spoke over you. Can you say that again?
Oh, I said, there's, there's other things, there's other resources out there that could be helpful for you that I'm.
Oh, great. Um, great. So I just, um, I think actually we might have a PSW coming over through Diversibility, but we're just, try to look you up for the website.
Yep.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Making connection right here in, in the committee.
Love to see it.
Um, Stephanie, do you have any updates?
Um, actually I do. Um, last week I was in Washington DC at the AUCD Conference, which is the annual conference for all the associations on uh, the, I think it's Association of University Centers on Disability. And so every state in the nation has at least one UCD. Oregon has two. One is through OHSU and one is through U of O. Um, their big annual conference was last week and I assist, I attended a couple of special interest groups and one of them was the Assistive Technology Group. And um, they brought in a speaker. I, I had this brought up at the COCA meeting um, on Tuesday as well. So Derek, you might have already heard about this, but um, they brought in a speaker from um, his name is Corey Lee. He is a travel blogger. He's an individual who uses a mobility device, specifically a power chair, to navigate his world and uh, his communities. And so he travels. He's um, been to all seven continents and he, and he um, then he writes uh, you know, a blog uh, entry on his experience. And so um, when he was talking, he was mentioning that, you know, the, as people are trying to figure out where to travel to and how to do it accessible. Um, he was saying that most states now have, if you go on to, if you Google it, most states have their own accessibility guides that kind of help people um, who experience a disability or mobility challenges um, plan vacations. Um, and so, but he said, there's one state in the nation that doesn't. And I was like, oh my gosh, I hope that's not Oregon. So I got on his um, blog and he actually visited Bend in April of 2023. And I don't know if any of you have heard of him, but he, um, he's been to Oregon, it looks like twice, Portland a couple, a few years ago. And then he came back to Bend and he had nothing but wonderful things to say. So I just wanted to kind of pass that along and connect you with his blog too. Um, because it's really interesting and you can see what he wrote about um, about Central Oregon. But he did, he went skiing with the OAS. He went to um, Riley Ranch. He went to Alpenglow. Um, he went to a few restaurants, The Drake and um, Pine, uh, Pine Tavern. Um, anyway, it was, it was fun to read it. Oh, the last Blockbuster. Anyway, one of the things that he, I got when I was on his blog and I was kind of looking, reading through some of his blog posts, he did mention, and this almost kind of gets back to one of our um, our strategic plan goals um, as far as excessive transportation accessibility. And he said that there is, it's just something to maybe research as we're trying to find accessible on-demand ride um, options. In London, there, every single black cab in the Black Cab Company is accessible. They have a ramp. Um, and so you can wheel right in. Um, and so somehow the city was, now obviously London is a lot bigger than Bend, Oregon. But it might be of um, something to look into to figure out, well, a lot bigger than Bend, Oregon, but it might be of something to look into to figure out, well, maybe we could look into some grant opportunities or to see what we could do to launch a, what's the word I'm looking for? My mind just went blank. But to to trial this, you know, bring in a few cabs. You know, order some for the city and just see how it works, what the demand is and 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 then because I don't know. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say. I'm rambling, but but it's a really cool blog and if you know, it covers all things accessibility. So.
What's the name of the blog, Stephanie?
So it's curb free with Corey Lee, curb C U R B.
Right, with Corey Lee?
Corey Lee and Corey is spelled C O R Y L E E.
Okay, all pushed together. Okay.
All pushed together, curb free with Corey Lee dot com.
And and what's the name of the university organization that for some reason I've never heard of?
Oh, AUCD, the Association of University Centers on Disability. And then so the USeds are the University Centers on Excellence in Developmental Disabilities. And so I'm on a board for the OHSU, you said, but then there's also a U of O. And so every year they have their annual conference in Washington DC. It's a lot of policy stuff. And but it was about like four days of of meetings and special interest groups and meeting with legislators. It was, it was a great conference.
Great. Thank you, Stephanie. I think your suggestion fits in really well with the first goal for the accessible transportation group. And yeah, accessible cabs are something that we've been looking into. I was expected, I expected to be shocked at how expensive accessible taxis are, and instead I was shocked at how cheap they are. It really our our cost should not be a barrier there. Great. Any updates from, let's see, Corey, are you online?
Hi. Yeah. So Stephanie, I appreciate that about the blog. I'm actually, will be curious to look and see if he went anywhere like on the east side of Bend. Yeah, that would be my curiosity because it's, I mean, a lot of people who visit Bend, you know, spend time on the west side and there's this whole idea about the city. But maybe he did. But anyway, I, this is a personal update, but so I've been unemployed for a little while, a couple of months, but I did get a job offer yesterday at the National Parks Conservation Association, and I really like the org because they're very human centered. And all about trying to make national parks more inclusive and accessible in general to everybody, but definitely for disabled people. And I'm just really looking forward to that, being able to participate in that conversation.
Thanks, Corey. Liz, do you have any updates?
Well, this is Liz Deether Martin. There's no. Liz Woodfin?
No, I don't have any updates and congratulations, Corey.
Thank you.
Other Liz? Liz Deether Martin, sorry.
Oh, I already spoke up, didn't I? Did you? I did, didn't I?
Thank you. Sorry.
Carl, we both, we both shared and I'm sorry, I didn't say this is Liz W, by the way.
How about Nick? Do you have any updates for the roundtable?
Yeah, this is Nicholas Raiden or Nick. Yeah. So as an architect, we have a potential client who has reached out to us to unfortunately, they're going through a lawsuit regarding accessibility. But they've reached out to us to be able to to redesign their facility to make it more accessible to and for parking and site and all that stuff. So so that's been kind of cool to be able to to help a potential client make their facilities more accessible to everyone. So just kind of doing that type of thing with architecture and and speaking of also, I've been working on that letter regarding the restaurants and having an accessible route to roof decks and things like that. So it's just taken me a little bit of time and but I've been really thinking through like how to write that and what we want to achieve with that. And so I'm hoping to kind of wrap that up over the Thanksgiving break here. So that's kind of my updates.
Thanks, Nick. Is that something you'll be able to share with the committee?
Yeah. So what I'll do is once I get my draft together, I'll probably send it to to Lisa or Cassandra and and then have them distribute it just for those public meeting rules. So I'll all send that out probably next, not this weekend, but the weekend after.
Excellent. Is there anybody I missed?
Yeah, you missed me, Carl. This is Derek.
Eric, I'm sorry about that.
No problem. Yeah, I'm not trying to kind of tie this into relevant COBAC projects and things like that. So I guess, yeah, Corey, congrats on the new job. I'm assuming that you're just going to decide to take it after what you told us. That's really exciting. And just to kind of piggyback off, you know, talking about the east side of Bend. Our transit station Hawthorne Station is currently kind of at that nexus of Greenwood and Third Street. It's a very busy area. ODOC had put in some kind of marked crosswalks, which I think those have been super effective. I use them all the time to to cross the street. I believe it's called like a hawk signal, the one that calls out and says, wait, wait, traffic. And so just piggybacking off of of some of that work, we are just are getting our contractor on board to redesign our entire Hawthorne Station, the outside and the parking lot. So basically the plan, if anybody's ever been down Hawthorne, at the time the buses all pull in, it's pretty chaotic. There's people walking, rolling across the street, boarding buses, there's buses on both sides, there are bicyclists coming, there are cars it's a two lane road and you cannot fit two cars and buses on each side. So it's a lot of egress acts ingress into the Safeway parking lot. And Safeway wanted to make sure that that entrance was open. So we talked about, you know, can we work the city to make this like a pedestrian area? And it's basically a designated collector's street. So what we're doing is we have a lot of kind of underutilized parking toward kind of the north side of our building. That's also where our other COIC departments are, like Community and Economic Development. And so we're basically taking that those vehicles that would be on kind of the Safeway side of the street where the liquor store is pulling those off the street and and having them queue in designated spaces in our parking lot. And so kind of get to get to the accessibility perspective as we have HHPR as an engineer, they're staying on board to kind of oversee the construction and we were, you know, wanting to make sure that there's some, a lot of accessibility opportunities in addition to like EV charging stations and things that come with mobility hubs. So you know, maybe there's an opportunity to showcase that. I think construction will start next summer, but maybe looking at like next fall, it's going to be a little crazy. Just getting in and out of there, but you know, maybe we could do something, hopefully it's around welcoming week, but it may be a little after to try to celebrate that because we did redesign the inside a few years ago and made the counters a particular height. We actually used Jordan Old to kind of demonstrate and took some measurements from him and his power chair as to like how high the counter should be and things like that. So just opportunities to to talk about that and to be there and, you know, even while it's being, it's already designed, but maybe there's some input from this group. And also maybe once it's done, we can come visit it. The other thing that's kind of relevant to this conversation and working with Oregon Adaptive Sports is that you know, we're starting Mount Bachelor Winter Shuttles this year. There is, those are vehicles are ADA accessible. We're going to have a season pass for $299 that a lot of people have asked for. So a lot of the people that can't drive or don't want to drive and get a season pass just for the shuttle specifically, we haven't offered that in a few years. And then I'm working on purchasing a bike trailer for the summer service next year that goes to the Visitor Center, which is ADA accessible as well as some of the trails and then also Mount Bachelor. And so I think that you know, the concept of buying the trailer is last year when we didn't have the trailer, we were having to put extra bikes in the you know, where the ADA was and where the lift ramp is. And now we want to really preserve that area, load all the the bikes on the trailer and have that as a space because the, we've worked with Oregon Adaptive Sports in the past with our old bike trailer to see like how their trikes could fit and some of the electric ones and things like that. And they're they're really big. So the idea now is to be able to put those in that, you know, even load them through the ADA ramp and get them on there, secure them down. So we can provide transportation. So we're going to be doing some events, working with Oregon Adaptive Sports next year on that project. So just some kind of cool, excuse me, exciting things that are happening with transit in Central Oregon. So thank you.
Hey, Derek, this is Liz.
Hi, Liz.
Hey, that was a great update and I'm excited about the Hawthorne thing because I use that intersection a lot.
Good.
One of the things that happens in there is even though I've used it a bunch of times, I always end up walking on the north side of the street and then I realize, oh, I have to cross to the south side of the street to get to the crosswalk across Third. So I'm sure you guys have figured that in there, but that's, that's, that's a user error I always make, but then that's a like a design, it's never user error. It's a, it's design, right?
Right.
And then, of course, I mean, there's all the the talk of the Hawthorne Bridge in the future. So how is, I mean, are you planning for that or just going to have to rework once that's finally designed?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a few years out. So I think we're just going to kind of wait on that, that one. But you know, I think if anything, it helps, it helps us out having a having to cross that street is not fun. Like Jordan's been hit by a car before.
Oh, no.
Crossing that street. Yeah. So it's, you know, one of those things where we're really just kind of pushing for better pedestrian access in Bend and, you know, I, I, I think having more of those signal locations, they're expensive. I think that's one of the issues with putting a man, but I mean, they really do are effective at stopping traffic. I mean, you still got to look, you know, to make sure, but you know, I, it's, it's, it's dangerous to cross without it mid-block. You know, especially if you not have a signal. So just some things to kind of consider as we design our city for the future.
Right.
Yeah, this is John. One thing I heard was that they might be doing a pedestrian tunnel underneath Third just to avoid, because there's no way to go over it.
So that would be amazing. Yeah, we'll see.
Sorry, Liz, do you have something to add?
No, I just got to, oh, tunnel. I mean, there's like, if you look at the pedestrian tunnel under Third or under Greenwood going to pilot Butte, I mean, it's okay, but it's, it's better than having to cross Greenwood. Anyway, that was just my own personal reaction.
Yeah, tunnels can be dark and scary sometimes.
Yes.
All right. Well, this is Carl. I haven't given an update. I don't have anything to report on as far as meetings I've attended or anything like that, but I, I want to say that the update that we heard from Stephanie did make me think more about what this committee's role could be in encouraging accessible tourism here in Bend. We mostly think probably justifiably on this committee about better access for for Central Oregon residents, but we are a community that gets a lot of visits from around the world. And I wonder how we could better position ourselves as an accessible tourism destination. Whether that's something that this committee might want to make goals about or think more about in the future.
This is John. Speaking directly to that, when I was at the Visit Bend Board Meeting, they actually have money set aside to hire influencers to come in and showcase Bend. They're actually pulling funding from the Bay Area because it's just not going anywhere. It's just a waste of money. So they specifically reach out to influencers. So maybe we as a committee could write an official letter to Visit Bend saying, hey, when you're considering your influencer list for 2024 to highlight Bend, why don't you think about this guy? Or why don't you reach out to someone who's an influencer like? I mean, I don't know if you guys know who Zach Anna is. He's a comedian and he's, he's, he's got a huge following on YouTube. He'd be a great person to hire to come here. So maybe as a committee, we can write a letter to Visit Bend asking for specifically that.
Derek?
Oh, yeah, thanks, John and Carl. I was going to add that during the Coka meeting on on Tuesday that Stephanie hosted, Mike Riley, our city councillor was, he attended that meeting and he was talking about another Visit Bend kind of grant opportunity, I think it's like the hotel tax room. Money that comes in, but you know, more kind of like projects that could potentially align with some accessibility. So, you know, and thinking Carl about what you mentioned about visitors, it made me think of like the pilot project. And I think that's kind of what got the conversation started about looking at accessible transportation options and Uber lifts and, you know, if there's funding needed to buy a vehicle with a with a lift. Maybe that's something that Visit Bend could be interested in. So that was Carl, just another thing that came up in that meeting that I think we should plug as a potential if we want to help fund some of the subprojects.
Yeah. Great idea. Thanks. Okay, let's wrap up our roundtable discussion here and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is an update from our accessibility and equity manager, Cassandra.
Thank you, Carl. This is Cassandra. In response to that conversation just now, I love the idea of encouraging and promoting the idea of coming with Instagram influencers or just influencers generally. There are a huge number that that travel and want to come to Bend, I think, and and be part of the community and see it. So I think fantastic idea. Maybe we want to incorporate that potentially into work plan as a letter that we could, that we could do. I feel like there's been a lot of really great ideas today that we might just want to put like bullet points, like potentially given capacity, we could, we could jump over to other IRs, but fantastic. Also, knowing Coka and knowing that we've got Stephanie and Derek both here and the interconnectedness of the work that we do. I am just throwing this out there. It would be fantastic to have COBAC and Coka, I think, in some sort of a 2024 like joint session. I think it'd be fantastic to bring us all together as individuals who are working collectively and individually to bring accessibility in our communities. Wouldn't it be awesome for the first time, probably pre pandemic, to even have the opportunity to either do that in person or virtually or a hybrid combination of the two? But maybe that's something that we could jointly work on. And Stephanie, I could talk to you offline and Derek too, but just coming to me is there's just so much overlap and we say like back at the Coka meeting earlier in this week and on Tuesday and I, I think that there's a lot of chance for us to 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 expand our, expand the pie of of the people who are working on these projects. So anyways, just a thought.
What if we invite them to our event in June?
Yeah, the barbecue.
Love it. Yeah, yeah.
They don't have any contact information though, as far as. Meetings.
Yeah, Stephanie.
Yeah. So I wanted, so I and and myself and Kim Curly, we co-chair Coka. We don't have like a web presence or, you know, and that's one of the things that we have talked about on the steering committee is how to you know, bring awareness to the work that we're doing in the committee, increase attendance at our meetings. And COBAC has been the topic of the last couple of steering committee meetings on finding ways for the two of us to collaborate together or or create a more cohesive work plan. And so I, I think that's a great idea, Cassandra, but if anybody wants to get ahold of Coka, you can email myself or or Kim Curly. And she's with commute options. So and that's the best way to get ahold of us. So.
That sounds great. And I'll, I'll go offline with you, Stephanie, and we'll work to to put That sounds great, and I'll, I'll go offline with you, Stephanie, and we'll work to, to put that together, oh, Derek, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick note that um. So C O K A is more of a regional group and most of you are probably aware, um, so there are, you know, folks from like the city of Redman and some of their engineers and. Historically, the, the cities across the region would attend and provide updates about some of their, you know, ADA improvements that they're making in their own community, so. Just kind of wanted to provide that context that maybe just like, you know. Having, I guess, combining those efforts, we'd want to acknowledge that or be sensitive of that to other folks from other cities that might also be joining, so. Good for thought.
Thank you, I think there's definitely something to understand and respect C O K A's distinctness, but then also the joint efforts that our entire communities want to continue to build off of, which is exciting. Um, with that, I turn to um, the exciting announcement coming out of the World Institute on Disability. It's the, I wanted to share with you all, the Global um, uh, Human Fellowship. And this is in honor and tribute and legacy of Judy Human, which I have shared with you before, she passed away earlier this year. Um, but absolutely, as referenced as the mother of disability rights, as we know her. Uh, and love her and look up to her and respect her and absolutely a hero of mine, to say the least, um. But they, they announced this amazing fellowship, if anyone's interested in learning more, it's something that's gonna be happening um, between twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five in July. It's part-time, twelve-month fellowship, um, and it's for individuals with lived disability experience in the disability community who have experience. Um, or leadership within disability rights and justice fields, and they're encouraged to apply, so. Just wanted to throw this opportunity out there, because I know that a lot of us are doing, doing the work, um, and it would be amazing to continue to honor Judy's legacy and also the. The institute, the World Institute on Disability and work they're doing, and I wanted to share that with you all. Um, here is our asterisk follow-up for Leadership Bend, um, from the Bend Chamber, um, I just, just received this morning. Notification, uh, Leadership Bend is a group that comes out of um, the Bend Chamber that's identified and comprised of. Individuals, I think there's about thirty individuals that are selected and identified from within the Bend community of leaders, um, they come together as a cohort annually. And so the twenty twenty four group, um, I was able to create a, a proposition for them for a, a proposal of um. Partnering with the city and COBAC specifically to say, um, let's create more accessibility in the city of Bend and the community generally. Um, that I followed that up with kind of extensive back and forth with emails and was able to present to them um, earlier this week on Tuesday. Um, and was notified this morning that they are anticipating on moving forward with accepting. Our proposal and gonna be joining us and working with the uh, the equity team and also COBAC. Um, and we're gonna be uh, meeting in the next couple of weeks, um, they're really excited to meet COBAC members and to kind of um, gauge understanding of where we want to go with this. I um, posited the, the proposal as really focusing on snow removal, um, uh, service animals and then also making your uh, meetings and events accessible, right? Maybe that's creating checklists or we don't know what that could be, but um, they came back to say like, if we have different strings, could we use those? And I came, um, I responded just to say, it could be anything that we come up with and potentially it could be, you know, it could be the idea of. Uh, creating local businesses, it could be other ideas, but we're gonna have that kind of initial um, conversation of. What their interests are, what we think that we can achieve together, and they're, they're, the total time that they're together is nine months. And I'm not sure about what, what range in there they're able to, to do that together, but. It's exciting to know that we've made a little bit of progress to be able to work together with that group. And then ultimately that they're creating this impact project that's centered and focused just on accessibility, so. Stay tuned for um, invites to see if um, you all are available, I know in the next couple of weeks, it's, it's hectic with holidays and traveling and family and plans like that, but. This is an exciting update and we'll provide more for you when we have the opportunity.
That is so cool, Cassandra, this is Amanda.
Thanks, Amanda.
Nice work.
Hooray. Huzzah. Um, I, I will say, uh, for the sake of time, we'll, we'll keep this for next week, but I, Carl, thank you for opening up the floor, I, I'm. Uh, time and time again, my interactions with each of you, I'm always so moved and impressed with the work that you all do in our community. And I think we're able to share it sometimes and get glimpses of it of each other, but I think a lot of times we forget like. Uh, about each other, that we think about, like, we think about COBAC as a whole, but what, who makes COBAC up, so for the next meeting, I'd really like. For you to come back with a few things that you want to share about yourself, they could be professionally, they could be personally. And then what motivated you to become a part of COBAC, so as we're doing our year-end wrap-up. In December, we're gonna come back to these two questions, and that's gonna guide us as we, as we um, springboard into, into the new year and to a, a new exciting work plan, um, I'm just. So, so, so grateful for each of you and the impact that you make in our community, the work that you do. And I just want to take a moment to highlight that and keep that in public record and also just make sure it's memorialized for all time. Within the city of Bend, the contributions that you make, the work that you do, and it makes a difference and it matters, and I just want to highlight that at the end of the year, so. With that, um, I will um, go ahead and I, uh, Lisa, do we have um, councillor Campbell with us today?
No.
Okay.
Do not.
Okay, Carl, I turn it back to you then.
Okay, thanks, Cassandra, um, exciting update. I guess um, we're coming to the close here, is there any, any other COBAC business that we need to attend to today? Well, the needed, the next COBAC meeting is um, soon, it's December seventh. Um, at one o'clock, um, note the. The date change from our usual. So that we can um, avoid conflicts with um, holidays and other meetings. Um. And we will, the. Leaders of each of the subgroups will be reaching out to schedule um, that. Check-in with you guys um, between now and then. Great, well, I guess um, hearing no other business, the City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting for, for. Sorry, for November sixteenth is adjourned at two eighteen P M. Thank you.